To order, can we have the roll call, please?
Certainly. Mr. Hurt?
Here.
Ms. Remark?
Here.
Mr. McGinnis?
Here.
Mr. Bohan is absent. Mr. Moore, absent. Ms. Washington, here. Mr. Hoitzma?
Here.
Ms. Benjamin?
Here.
Mr. Neal, absent. Mrs. Sage?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a call. I hear you. I'm sorry, our chairman's not here tonight. He's under the weather and we didn't find that out until about an hour and a half ago or two hours ago. Anyway, I think each of you received copies of the minutes. Are there any additions or corrections?
There were several corrections. Grammatical, nothing big. Motion to approve.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll get to new items. Oh, yeah, by the way, for anybody who wants to speak to the board, would you fill out the green forms that are over there on that table? I have some already signed. Can we get the items, please? Item number one, rezoning. Plan, master plan, let's start over. Plan, master development amendment, Daytona mixed use, DEV 2012-050, quasi judicial hearing. Thank you very much. Can we hear from staff, please?
Thank you very much. Dennis Merzek, planner with the city of Daytona Beach. The first item tonight is a request for approval to rezone 188.9 acres of land located on West International Speedway Boulevard directly north of Daytona International Speedway, amending the previously approved master, Plan Master Development, PMD agreement, adding 118 acres of land to the existing PMD zoning district and revising the approved mixed use retail, entertainment, hotel, commercial office, and residential uses. I wanted to give the board the kind of a rundown of exactly the location that we're looking at. The area in the blue is the existing Daytona Live PMD, the 71 acres. You see it fronts ISB and also on the west side is West Road and then there is an access over on Bill France Boulevard. The proposed 118 acres that would be included in this PMD, I have it shadowed in yellow, includes property all the way up to either side of Dunn Avenue and also includes a property located at the corner of ISB and Bill France Boulevard. The total proposed PMD, I've got it shaded up there in the yellow and the blue, give you a clear indication of the area that we're looking at. Again, the total is 189 acres. The current zoning on the site, we do have the Daytona Live PMD. We also have M4 and industrial park and also BR2 business retail. The proposed zoning on the site, we're taking into account all of those properties and it would become the Daytona mixed use PMD, 189 acres for the planned development. The current land use is commercial amusement, which is the portion of the current Daytona Live. There is also general industrial and retail. The proposed land use change, land use amendment, which the application's already come over here to the planning board, was recommended for approval last month, just recently was approved or transmitted by the city commission. It would modify, it would amend the land use of a majority of the property to a commercial amusement, keeping the retail at the corner of the ISB and Bill France Boulevard. Again, this is a Plan Master Development or a PMD. When we take a look at the Plan Master Developments, we look at the purpose for a Plan Master Development. Some of the things that we look for is that it promotes a large-scale mixed use development. It's designed for an efficient land use. It allows for flexible design, promotes creativity in development and design, also provides greater environmental sensitivity. PMDs are a very unique district intended for developing large areas through a long-range nature of the development area. The project history, the current Daytona Live PMD was approved in 2007. The corporate headquarters office building, which is existing, and all the associated improvements, those were completed in 2009. And as I mentioned, the land use change amendment is in place. That's for the 148, excuse me, 114 acres the application is in. This request to rezone is contingent upon approval of the land use that'll be going into state. This is a proposed mixed use development. We do have several different categories of uses that are included into this PMD. These include retail, sales, and service, office, hotel, multi-family residential, multi-screen, theater. These are all uses that were also included in the Daytona Live PMD. We just, it's been carried forward into this new and amended PMD. The industrial use is added on. It's a additional use that would be included in the Daytona mixed use PMD. Excuse me. All the existing uses and proposed uses that were in the Daytona Live PMD have been identified in the staff report. All the new uses that are being proposed are also identified in your staff report. As for updates to the staff report, and I believe in your packet, you should have received bullet points. We have still been working with the applicant to make some modifications to the development agreement with regards to some of the development parameters. We've included more restrictive regulations, also looked at increasing setbacks and buffers. Staff has reviewed these changes and has found them acceptable. The applicant will be providing a little bit further detail on some of these modifications during his presentation. As for a recommendation, staff does recommend approval with the addition of the updates, as I just mentioned, to rezone 188.9 acres of land located on the West International Speedway Boulevard from M4 and BR2 to Plan Master Development, which includes amending 71 acres of the existing Daytona Live PMD and to enter into a PMD agreement establishing development standards for the PMD. An affirmative vote of six is required to recommend approval to the city commission. I do know we do have only seven members present, so it is six that is required to recommend a favorable approval to the city commission. And that does conclude staff's presentation.
Are there any questions of staff? Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening. My name is Gary Carotti. I'm senior vice president of International Speedway Corporation and general counsel located at One Daytona Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. I'm here tonight on behalf of ISC and the France family, and we're asking, as you've heard, for the approval of the Plan Master Development application for our planned mixed use project. Now, I got the role of going off first, so I'm gonna give some introductory remarks and then I'm gonna turn it over to Rob Merrill, everybody's very familiar with, to go through the technical aspects, and then we'll hear from Howard to go through some pretty pictures and some project highlights. But what we're here today to talk about really is a vision. I've been here, I was born in Halifax in 1960. I've been here 50 years almost, and I've seen huge growth in this town. But I think what we're talking about here is taking that growth to the next level. It's kind of a, and you've probably heard this, a picture, if you will, a visitor coming to our town, coming off of I-4, I-95, turning onto ISB, and what do they see? To the right, they see a premier motorsports facility like none other like it in the world. And to their left, hopefully, with your help, they will see an equally first-rate complex with retail dining and entertainment first rate like none other like it around. That would be the gateway to our town. That would be quite an impressive impact on visitors that would experience that and for citizens that could experience it every day. So with that, I'd also like to point out that we have a bit of a history with this town. We've been one of its oldest corporate citizens here, and we've had projects in front of you before, and I think we've done them pretty well. We've had the $50 million Fan Zone, which is the best in sports. We just, two or three years ago, completed the $53 million International Motorsports Center, which houses three of the France family's corporate headquarters, which is LEED certified and also, I think, a project that went off rather well. In addition to that, we had a $20 million track repaving. So hopefully, no pun intended, we have a pretty good track record, I think, of doing projects the way we like to see them done, in a first-rate manner that brings pride to our city. So we're here tonight to ask your approval to hopefully to try to do it again. So with that, I'll leave the microphone over to Rob.
Thanks, Gary. Mr. Chairman, temporary chairman and board members, Rob Merrill, 150 Magnolia with the Cobb Cole Law Firm. Really excited to be here tonight on behalf of the Speedway with this project that I think is probably the most important zoning case I've been involved in in the 25 years that I've been doing this. Until next month, of course, when I come with the project across the street, which will be by far the most important, and Gary gave you a little bit of a preview of that. And as he mentioned, Howard Elkes is gonna get up and give you the pretty pictures. I'm sort of the dry part of the program tonight, and I guess I usually am. But I want to do a couple of things for you. Dennis did a fantastic job of explaining what we're here for tonight. He actually stole a bit of my fire trying to explain the Plan Master Development concept to you, and it is a little different than most of the PUDs, the PDs, that you guys see in that it's a long-range type of development project. It is a, it's a big vision sort of long-range plan that consists of a development agreement and a master plan. In this case, they call it a future development master plan, so it is intended to be something significantly into the future, which this project will be. It's got a 25 or 30-year type of timeframe. And Howard will give you a little bit of the vision that came into that, that planning that resulted in the plan that's in your package tonight. We do also have four other applications, one of which you've seen already, the Future Land Use Map Amendment for the 114 acres that you saw a couple months ago. Next month, as I mentioned, we're gonna be coming back to you with a PMD again, a long-range master-type planning document across the street. These two projects really are brother and sister and are very much connected, and you'll see some of that in the flavor of what Howard gives you with the planning aspect of it. I will also mention to you that we're gonna have a grandstand site plan before you very soon, also in process, as well as a minor amendment to our conceptual sign plan, which you all approved a few years back. Finally, I want to mention to you that this is not the beginning, this is just the beginning of the approval process. We're gonna keep you busy for a few months, but you'll have several site plan approvals for projects as they come forward on both sides of the street. So it's probably gonna be a several-year job for y'all, so Bob, I hope you're in for the long haul. You've been here a while. It's gonna be a while longer. The final thing I wanted to mention to you is, as Dennis said, there was a short memo of bullet points of items that actually came out mostly out of discussions we've been having the past few days with the school board, who in this case are not only weighing in on the project as the provider of schools for the residents that might live at the project, but as our neighbor. So we've been dealing with just issues such as setbacks and buffers and things, that we have just a couple of things that we're gonna work out and get into the development agreement, and that was one of the things. We have a couple of other, all of these, as Dennis mentioned, are additional restrictions or limitations that would be in place in the project, some of which came from the development code that we borrowed and brought in, and I have just listed them here for you. And what I would ask of you is, any motion that's made tonight would hopefully incorporate these additional restrictions and conditions on the project. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to Howard for the interesting portion of the program tonight, and we have a whole team of folks here from every discipline to answer your questions, if you have any, after Howard gets done.
Could I ask just one question, Mr. Merrill? I think this very first bullet point satisfaction of the Belushi County School Board, I believe that should be school district? If that's the one.
You know, and I think Sarah Lee's gonna speak to that, to her satisfaction or thoughts about that. And yeah, whatever it's gonna be.
I'm sure she had the right language there.
Whatever it's gonna be in the actual agreement, Tracy will get Sarah Lee and the school board's blessing, so absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Howard Elkes of Elkes Manfredi Architects, based in Boston, and thrilled to be with you this evening. We have a residence here in Florida as well, we're not domiciled, but so we spend a lot of time down here, and so I'm even more thrilled to be a part of this project and also complimented by Speedway's choosing our firm to help them envision what this development might be. I think it is a remarkable opportunity here because it is at the gateway of Daytona Beach, which you all will know, and next to the Speedway, which is an international icon. The question is, how do you complement the two? How do they work together? How do you create a mixed-use development which really embodies what Daytona Beach is all about, what the Speedway is all about? Because it's host to so many people who come here every year, but in our judgment, Speedway's judgment, this is also very much part of the city of Daytona Beach, and it should be for the people who live here and the people in the region to come here first. I will tell you that we were the master planners and designers of City Place in West Palm Beach, and that same philosophy drove that project, that if you designed it so that it was something that the local citizenry could be proud of and identify with, then other people would come. Well, in this case, other people are coming anyway across the street, so the equation is kind of reversed. But it's a tremendous opportunity, and already today, with the bridge crossing, making a portal to the city. Most cities don't have such a portal visually across the Boulevard leading into the city, so this really announces that portal. What we're able to think about is how to complement that on the other side. I think Speedway's headquarters building is a very impressive building and already foretells of what development of that kind and character and quality could mean for this whole complex. I think what we're trying to envision is almost a seamless kind of portal in which the energies that are developing on the Speedway side, that whole experience is tied through the existing pedestrian bridge to something that complements it and is the natural kind of knuckle connection to this mixed-use development. It should have a heart. It should have great public spaces. It should have great streets. It should feel like a community, a piece of a larger community, something that in its initial phases can have a critical mass and they're there and identify itself in something then that can spawn future growth. So those are the driving forces. I don't know whether we have some. I guess I'm doing that. Okay. So just quickly, the, these are some images. There is no design, but you can see kind of where our heads are. I mentioned the existing headquarters building. I think it represents the future. This is not City Place. We're not trying to relate to the historic architecture of the Palm Beaches. I think this whole environment that we're operating in is really quite free to look at new ideas, and that excites me a lot. So I think the existing building that you know well at this point also embodies some of the spirit of the Speedway itself. It's quite remarkable that the building talks to the Speedway, and if you've been up there, it feels like you're kind of in the grandstand of the Speedway in one sense. But there are many ways that contemporary architecture can support great office buildings, wonderful hotels, living, and Florida has no lack of examples. I could have taken all the images right out of Florida. So what this also says is we have an opportunity here to make some iconic buildings, and our plan suggests spaces where there can be some unique architecture, and I think if you come in to the city this way, we already have and will have a very iconic piece of architecture that will dominate this scene, but I think we can do some wonderful things that complement it. So the nature of materials, I think we're talking about, we've already established glass and metal and so forth, but I think what we're looking for is not a monochromatic statement at all, but it has texture, it looks like it didn't happen all at one time, and feels like it is done by different hands and so forth, so it has an authenticity and legitimacy, and something that can keep growing with its time. All of that, I think, makes for much more interesting places. The other thing which is, as we all know, Florida is a winner and is, you know, just incredible landscaping and the opportunity to do wonderful things that parts of the country can't. And we see that landscaping is important, not only in terms of the edges of the project as it relates to the Boulevard, but also that it carries through so that, in fact, there's a garden aspect even though it has urban, you know, a sense in its center, but that seamlessly pours right through to the residential neighborhood areas of the project and becomes really part of the Florida picture. So another thing which is going to be very apparent, it already is through all the graphic statement that's in the Speedway side, is lighting is very important, and I think here is a chance, if we have some iconic architecture, that again can balance this portal and make it very exciting to drive into Daytona Beach, but also if you think about the urban spaces that we can create, day and night, and retail, on-street cafes, restaurants, indoor/outdoor, all of those kinds of things that evoke Florida living and also talk to entertainment possibilities and so forth, the opportunities of making an incredible place at night, I think even goes beyond what we did at City Place. Amenities, we haven't programmed this yet in terms of the nature of the spaces and places and so forth, but when you start thinking about great public spaces, the hardscape, the soft space, the kinds of things, I don't know whether you know a project at Maricón at Brand, which is in Los Angeles, which is, has a park at its center, and green space rather than the hard space at City Place and so forth. The beautiful thing about this development is it can have it all. We have places that can lend themselves to entertainment and a lot of people versus, you know, gradients where we can get places for children, play spaces. What we're really have in mind, and this is already part of the Speedway picture, is this is a family place. So it's a place where we hope people enjoy living, working, playing, learning. We already have education all around us, and that's also part of the story here and opportunity. So the various uses that have already been mentioned, office can take its shape as you see in the headquarters building as a dedicated building, but we also see all these mixed uses combined in various ways. We look at all our work from the ground up. That's people live and work and walk at the sidewalk, on streets, public spaces, and if you don't make them exciting, active, and pervasive in your consistency of the quality and character of those areas, it doesn't matter what you build above it. But, so we start at the street, all active edges, no fronts, no backs, and move up. So office can be very helpful in giving some weight to the retail so we don't look like strip retail when we get into some of our streets. They still have some gravitas to it. Hotels, hospitality, that's already part of the picture here, but not the kind of hotels that we envision. They're motels, and with this kind of density of development, there's an opportunity to have some more vertical hotels that can help shape our spaces and create amenities under themselves that can pour out on the street or raise above the street level for food and beverage and other functions. We have water along the Boulevard already. We think that's exciting, so in fact, there's a way of, in one sense, of going across the water to this community. So we have both this seamlessness through the bridge and connection across, and at the same time, we can have other portals to the development which come across water, and we can use that water. It isn't really used as a feature now, but we can make some exciting things happen there. The residential, I think there's gonna be a variety of residential here, so we have an opportunity of many building types and possibility of ownership and apartments and so forth. The market will dictate that over time, but I think what our approach has been is that there will be community and neighborhoods and the open space, all those same values that we apply to the overall development will go right to your doorstep and also up. This is the time of sustainability and green, so we don't expect the green to remain on the ground plane. I'm just gonna go through. Where's the projector?
Screen.
Oh, that one. Okay. We've just taken, I don't know whether you know some of these developments, but you see the core of our project in the dotted line and West Gate, which city center, which is in Glendale, Arizona. These are some projects which are related as sports, so stadia, football, or multi-use and so forth. But that's an exciting development which is driven by entertainment retail. It's not a living place, so we're not looking at community here, so to speak. But I mentioned City Place, and that has a lot of different dimensions, and we are still adding to it. We added the Office Tower on Okeechobee, and we just designed a new iconic office building which will be right in the middle of Okeechobee, really, which will be the icon of the Palm Beaches in a very contemporary structure. So it's a matter of creating something that's a living, breathing thing that can grow over time, and this certainly is an example. You can see that, if I can use this, I'll just show you, that's the new office building right here. This is the first one we put. There's gonna be a hotel here, hopefully moving quickly as well, and we've looked at office and other amenities up Rosemary. And as you know, what's happened at City Place is it became the catalyst for redevelopment and really the modern city of West Palm Beach. Nancy Graham was the incredible mayor at that time, had great vision. And now what we anticipated is that by making Rosemary the main spine, it went to Calmada Street, so it ties all the way through, and huge development has happened and will continue to happen, and that's what happens when you do things like that. Come on. Let's have it here. Now, let me go back. We don't have specific plans, but what we do here is show you a district concept for the core area. And each district will have its own character, and Victory Circle, we're calling it right here, Bill France is on this side and this is the other. Bill France is on this side, and this is the other gateway at Daytona Boulevard here. The office building today is in this zone, right here, so here's the Speedway Boulevard. What, the bridge is right across here to the track. And so, we've kind of given names to this, not because they're going to stay that way, but they represent kind of the way we're thinking, that what we call Victory Circle would be the entertainment, retail, hospitality, and great space in there, so they could deal with crowds coming across from the Speedway or become a gateway to the Speedway. As you know, a lot of people come by bus or park in this part of the picture, on this side of the street, and they walk that bridge now, and there's nothing that speaks to them. I mean, it's a non-experience. But we could really celebrate through this space both the goings and comings of this excited crowd and change, help change and improve the experience that people have when they come to the Speedway and Daytona Beach. So, that's our thinking about this space. We call it Victory Circle. We hope that it becomes, could become a place of celebration for champions, so to speak. And we took that same name, and we called it Champions Way here. This is kind of the north-south spine of the development. So, this is the heart of the retail mixed use as it moves into the development and takes you up to what we call Cinema Square up here. It might have been an easy thing to put the cinema, as was the case in Westgate, part of that entertainment retail space, but we felt that the cinema has a major hand in terms of the local market. And, you know, when you go to the movies, you want to go to dinner before, dinner drinks afterwards, or whatever, the cinema is a terrific anchor. And we're not talking about a typical anchored mall attitude about the retail here. We're not envisioning department stores per se. We have them very nearby in a mall, and so, we're not going to repeat that. This is nothing about a mall. This is a community development. And so, by planting, by planting the cinema there, we take our dining and restaurant, food and beverage, and it's a thread through the whole project. And by doing so, you got on-street life, and that helps make a safe place for families and so forth. I mean, you just look around how you do that here. There is a Main Street which runs this way, and Main Street from Bill France Boulevard over here would run all the way up through the rest of the property, so you can drive Main Street from most of the housing right into the heart of this little village or whatever. I don't call it a town, it's not a city. We're in a city. But it's like every great city, there are neighborhoods and subcenters, and that's what we hope this becomes. So, this, as we move up, we have an opportunity, for example, to get a sports retailer in combination with maybe a lake up at that point. We see water as a possibility of trailing through the property in maybe some interesting and thematic way that's all to be explored. Our major water, as you know, is along here, and this area, which has already begun through the headquarters building, is obviously a very prime mixed-use space for office, hospitality, and other uses. It has so much exposure at the portal. So, in terms of a gradient, in terms of height, we think the tallest buildings ought to be around the Boulevard here, as it's already been established, and then it trails down so it becomes more of the scale of a neighborhood or residential community. So, that's, now, talk about neighborhood, that's kind of the way we look at this area. We call it Neighborhood Center. It could be, it could have cultural uses, it could have, you know, a play space, it could have market, it could have, you know, stuff that's convenience, retail, and so forth. So, it might not be the same retail that you have on Main Street. Could be the fix-it people that, you know, you need in a community, which would be in City Place what happens off Rosemary. So, these are just some images of the Victory Circle and that project right there and all those people. That happens to be Americana at Brand in Los Angeles, which is, or Glendale, which is a very successful project today, which has residential largely over retail, which appears to be two stories. The parking is all buried. I haven't mentioned anything about parking. We're not looking at parking garages here. We want to bury them. You can't bury them down, so they have to be buried kind of within blocks. But we don't want that to characterize what we're doing. So, anyway, the whole sense of gathering day and night is what we expect to happen in the Victory area. This is another set of images. This happens to be a project which we just finished called Liberty Wharf on Boston Harbor. It's really the first opportunity for people really to get out. All the restaurants have floor-to-ceiling glass, open totally out to the water and to the harbor walk right at water's edge. We have a water's edge too, and we can imagine that around Victory Circle, the part that interfaces between the water that faces the Boulevard and the main space could be something like this, where there's decked, you know, multi-level dining, which is what you're looking at there. And this, this just out of the box, just is a horrendous success. And I think by the juxtaposition of water, we're not on the ocean here, but we have the possibility of having a great experience. So, iconic elements in the space. Here's, this is a project that we did in The Woodlands, Texas. If you've been north of Houston, it's a very successful new community, new, it's probably 50 years old today, around 100,000 people. But they fortunately hadn't done the heart of the community. They'd done shopping malls, residential developments and so forth, and they asked us to really think about the heart. And we're adding hotels and many office buildings and so forth around a great public space, which is a park on the water and has a fantastic fountain, and you can see the celebration Fourth of July here. We hope that this is a place for community celebration, not just Speedway-related celebration. So, I'll just keep moving along. This is important because we, I mentioned great streets. You know, we learned a lot about, in former times, we were always pointing to Europe, why we liked to go there, because they cared about the sidewalk and outdoor cafes, and our laws didn't even permit it. Permit it, well, cities in America finally changed, and I think Florida was ahead of the curve. But anyway, great streets is essential if this place is going to be successful. Also, the possibility of cover. We have sun, and we dealt with it through arcades and fans and so forth, because we were competing with air-conditioned balls in West Palm Beach. And we want to think about that so that our retail can be successful and compete with the air-conditioned opportunities that are around. So, people come here as a matter of choice and spend time. We want, we want to create a place where it's not drive-in, drive-out. You come, you know, Champions Way, this is a diagrammatic section, imagining that there is a street, but it is separated by a centerpiece. So, in fact, there are really two streets around a, an island, continuous island, where we can have restaurants, we can have shopping, we can have public amenities and so forth, so that we have the relationship that I showed, oop, in the picture, the sidewalk with the opportunity of having dining on the sidewalk with shops and so forth, or we can come in the center and do something. Santana Row in San Jose has been a great success. Meisner Park here was not successful in creating that big green space in the middle because it was too broad, so the street didn't feel like it connected. You're shopping, single-loaded retail on two sides of a street that's divided by a park. We want that to be much narrower, so that's an active zone, place also where people can sit and enjoy themselves in the middle of this environment, under shade trees and so So, Cinema Square, obviously, the cinema itself brings life and activity, and we might think about putting the lobby either on-street or up above. We've thought about even connecting the cinema to another building across the street, so there's a kind of portal coming in from the north into our Champions Way. All kinds of possibilities here. But again, there's some scale at the end of Champions Way, which we can do through a cinema marquee, so there's a target at the end. We don't have anchor department stores to be our anchors, so we're looking at the cinema not only to be a functional anchor in terms of the way it's used, but also a visual anchor and light it at night. So, again, here's a chance to get some light and interest and excitement. You see on-street sidewalks, you see actually a scale that we could develop there on that left-hand picture, so there's some oomph at that end of Champions Way that kind of balances the winner circle. And of course, what you're looking at here, which is quite remarkable, you know, imagine this quality as a whole mixed-use development in various ways. That's why I'm so excited about this opportunity here, and what we have across the street, which really is a tremendous beginning. I think that's the last slide. Well, thank you. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Aye, thank you.
You're very welcome. Nice to be here with you.
Do you have anybody else?
That's it.
That's it?
We're ready for it.
Okay. I'm sorry. Is that somebody in the audience that's not part of the group? Are there any questions of the applicant? Actually, is the board not well?
I'm just a hologram.
Was there anybody in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this issue? Yes, won't you come forward?
Good evening. My name's Phil Maroney. I'm president of The Root Company, 750 Fentress Boulevard, Daytona Beach, Florida. Appreciate the opportunity to come for you and speak today, and I don't know about you, but I'm really excited about this. I mean, to me, I think this is a real game changer for our city, and to be brought to us by a quality organization like ISC, it speaks volumes, I think. So, just a few comments. Obviously, I'm in favor of this. I believe it's a rare opportunity for the city to capitalize on a very unique economic development project, and I think it justifies a very creative, flexible, and bold approach to both land use and zoning applications. The proposal's a great example of far-sighted economic development planning. It's undertaken by a proven corporate citizen with a demonstrated track record in our community for responsible development and the betterment of our town. ISC takes great pride in its developments and its facilities, with one prime example being the International Motorsports Building. And you also heard Gary reference a couple of other major projects that have been undertaken. And I'd be hard-pressed to think that anyone couldn't look at these projects that have been done and find fault with them. They really, really, in my opinion, do a great service to us and enhance our area. In addition to significant capital investment made by ISC over the course of this development project, which as we hear will take some time to fully develop, our community's going to benefit for decades from the, in terms of jobs for our local residents, as well as entertainment for our visitors. I think that's a wonderful addition to the ISB corridor and the gateway to our city. What a fine example of what we can be. As the owner of a number of commercial buildings and vacant land in and around the area of subject property, The Root Company enthusiastically supports the applicant's request, and we view it as a project that's going to enhance the value of our own real estate holdings as well as those of neighboring property owners. The city, in my opinion, are also going to benefit greatly by this development through increased commercial property tax base, which should act to help reduce the tax burden borne by our residential homeowners. And I think all municipalities are concerned about that, and I think this is a chance to do something about it. I want to thank you for your positive consideration of this request, and I would appreciate you doing your part to assist in this transformative project. Chances to influence such a profound positive change in our community are rare, so I encourage you to embrace the opportunity so we don't look back years from now in regret, but look forward positively and from the generations that come in the future, much to their gratitude. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Bob. I'm Jim Cameron, Senior Vice President of Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber, and on behalf of the chamber, we're here in support of this project tonight. Daytona International Speedway Corporation has been a long economic engine here for this community, not only by the people that they employ, but also by the projects that they support here locally. And they have been a positive economic force for us. But still, this community, this county, is dealing with a 9.1% unemployment rate, and we still have to improve that number. And with this project, we see this as a positive, as a positive means to get that unemployment lower. And I'd like to also echo what Mr. Maroney had just said. It's going to add to the tax base, and that's something that this city needs, though, because we're all the time looking for new revenue to balance the budget and, I mean, to deal with the obligations that this city has to have. But we feel that this can be a positive force to help with that tax base, though. So, for those reasons, we support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Tim Stockman, 61 Lincoln Avenue. I am the president of the Daytona Beach Young Professionals Group. I would like to offer my support of this Daytona Beach mixed-use project. The YPG is very encouraged by ISC's long-range plan to improve our hometown for years to come. The mission of the YPG is to attract and retain young professionals in our community. We see a great need in our community for the amenities the project will bring. We love Daytona Beach. We want more exciting new locations for our members to work, live, and play. The ISB corridor is the gateway, as you've heard many times, to our community for many visitors and also people relocating to this area. Coming up ISB is the very first experience they have with Daytona Beach, so creating a vibrant development can only enhance our city. We urge your support of the application this evening as we see ISC continue to invest and support our great community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I think we've seen you before.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. My name's Sarah Lee Morrissey, and I'm here on behalf of the Volusia County School District. And I have to say, it is very, very exciting to be allowed, to be brought in on the ground floor with this project. This project is so exciting. This project is so exciting and really does have the potential to totally change things for our community and in such a positive way that, I can tell you that I really had fun working with the representatives to address our issues. And I especially want to thank this planning board for caring about the schools in their community and the staff for ensuring that we were a part of it. And most importantly, I'd like to actually recognize Mr. Bullock. Where are you? Because he really spent some time with me, and I'm hoping he feels the same way, that we've addressed each other's concerns such that this project absolutely can go forward and just be everything that everyone's thinking of and hopefully even more, and that will be a good neighbor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else like to speak in favor? Would anybody like to speak against? Board? Any comments?
Well, you're looking at me. I'll start.
No, I'm just looking both ways.
I have been biting my tongue so long. No, and, and actually, I'll try and make my comments without any racing puns, but it seems that that's a very difficult thing to do. So racing ahead, as complicated as this was, I actually decided to try and spare the board and get as many of my questions answered and concerned as I could before getting here because this is, even from the lawyers and the staff I've heard involved, the most complicated thing they've worked on. And actually, all but, for me, all but one of my issues has been dealt with, and the last one I have grappled with, and it's just sitting here listening and putting it together now, that even that's dealt with. I do need to say, I am personally opposed to gambling, and I'm desirous of seeing that the citizens of this state continue in their voter referendums, four of them since 1978, to continue to oppose casino gambling. But given my personal preference against it, it doesn't set aside that the city has actually already paved the way for that to happen, the possibility of that to happen by okaying similar language in the Dog Tracks PMD that was passed in 2007, before I was on the board, but it was passed and it's been through the commission. And so, thinking about that, my personal preference really can't enter into it. The city has a direction, and they're comfortable with that direction. So I tried to look at this from what is the way to make this the best possible thing in the city. Given the, and even watching this and listening to Mr. Alkins and being very familiar with some of these projects, having been in them, this, to me, just given the overall possibility of transforming not only the Speedway area, but the city of Daytona Beach, you just can't ignore that opportunity, you know? And the, also giving, given the willingness of the Speedway and staff in working with the city and working with the school board, you know, it's a first-class organization. We know that. You can't live here for any length of time and not know that. And there was a quote that was shared with me earlier this afternoon that I just thought, for me, put the icing on the cake for this, as I've listened to this and as I came to my conclusions here. It is a quote by Daniel Bernbaum, who is an architect and a planner. Mr. Alkins would probably be very familiar with others. And it speaks to this so directly. "Make no little plans. They have no magic to stir men's and women's bloods. Make big plans. Aim high in hope and work." And I think that's what this does.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've got an unusual comment. I'm agreeing with Tracy. You know, it's tough not to get caught up in the excitement and the things that, you know, that we can have, that it will go forward is very exciting.
Yes?
I'd like to also say that I'm excited. When I got the packet and thumb through it, initially, the first thing I thought about was Daytona Live. And I was like, oh, yes, we're going back at it again. I am really, and then after going through the packet and studying it, all I can say is, it's something that should have happened a long time ago. Initially, we talk about the gateway to the city. This is the time that we get people involved, get them into what Daytona Beach is about on this side, just past the gateway sign. And then they'll want to go over on the beach side, but let's get them here first. I'm ready to vote.
Anybody else have any comments?
Sure.
I've lived here a long time, and I have a lot of event friends. I have people that come and visit me for Bike Week and Race Week and all of the other wonderful things that we have here. And this is a project that I can truly say that I can have friends come to visit me for this, for world-class entertainment. They're, you know, not everybody's a race fan, but everybody likes the movies, they like fine dining, they like nice shops. This is what I think some of my friends will come visit me for when it's not an event, so I'm all for it, too.
Anybody else?
One request. When we build the hotel, could we make sure that the banquet room will hold about 250, 300, maybe 500, so we don't have to go beachside? We'll have a choice. Thank you.
I make a motion we approve Res zoning Plan Master Development Amendment, Daytona Mixed Use Development 2012-050, quasi-judicial hearing.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Yes. Motion, all in favor? Aye. All opposed? This is a wonderful project. We are really looking forward to it, and we're certainly glad you're here. Thank you very much.
And guess what, Rob? We'll say, that Rob Merrill, he was right.
Is John?
I'll still be here.
I kept looking for him to pop up.
Yeah, about six months.
That's unusual.
Don't miss a day.
Wow.
Wow, what a claim of mouth, huh?
I thought they were here for the church. I thought they were the ones in the back were here for the church.
No, they were the ones in the back. I was checking.
Okay, okay. Oh, you know them. Okay.
Okay, wait till that door gets closed and then...
Okay. I'm not asking.
Okay, we'll call it. Will you read the next?
Certainly.
I got excited there.
Like we all did.
Item number five, rezoning, Planned Commercial Development Amendment, Ring Haven, DEV, 2012-047, quasi-judicial hearing.
Can we hear from staff?
Right. Thank you, Dennis Roser, Planner with the City of Daytona Beach. Again, the first item today is a request by Walter E. Foster III, Esquire, on behalf of Jimmy Bryson, President of Yukon 2000 Incorporated, for approval to rezone 10.69 acres of land located at 13, 313 North Tamoka Farms Road, approving the fourth amendment to the previously approved planned commercial development, adding vehicle service, light and heavy, to the permitted uses on the subject property. The, the location of the, the site is at 313 Tamoka Farms Road. Can I pull that up for you? There you go. You can see, the property is located between I-95 and Tamoka Farms Road. The current future land use is general industrial, and the current zoning is commercial planned, planned commercial development, or PCD. The Lot 2 Ring Haven PCD, the little history on it, the PCD was approved in 1997. Site improvements, and the building was constructed in 2011. This is the fourth amendment to the Ring Haven PCD. The proposed use additions, the applicant is requesting to allow vehicle service light and vehicle service heavy, and I have provided definitions of exactly what it was they were looking for with those in your, your staff report. Also, the ability to display and sell motor vehicles that are manufactured at the site should point out that all of the activity that's going to be happening at the site will be happening inside the building, with the exception of some of the display vehicles that can be outside in a designated area. They do request five designated areas for display. I've got a picture of the, of the building as it, as it exists right now. This is from Tamoka Farms Road. I also have a layout of the, an overview, a site plan of the buildings. Currently, only one of the buildings has been developed. That's the building that's flashing up there, and that's the one that's closer to 95, further away from Tamoka Farms Road. The location of the five display areas, I know it didn't show up in some of the packages, so I'm going to point it out exactly over here. You can see a little bit up over there at the top. I do have a close-up for you. You'll notice that those are the five display areas and the parking areas, and those are going to be located adjacent to 95, toward the back of the facility. As for a recommendation, staff does recommend approval of the fourth amendment to the Lot 2 Ring Haven PCD, rezoning the 10.69 acres of land located at 313 North Tamoka Farms Road, and amending the permitted uses on the site. An affirmative vote of six by the planning board shall be required to recommend approval through the city commission. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Are there any questions of staff? Thank you very much. Can we hear from the applicant, please?
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'm Walter Foster, 315 South Palmetto Ave, Daytona Beach, here for the applicant, Yukon 2000. I have the president, Mr. Bryson, is here today. And as was pointed out, this is going to be the fourth amendment for this particular PCD and Ring Haven Lot 2. And as you can see, what's happened is my client would like to change or expand his use to allow this heavy vehicle repair and light vehicle repair. It's not going to include any type of gas station, car wash, filling station, gas pumps, that type of thing. In fact, just to clarify, we say we're going to be manufacturing vehicles, what the proposed use we're going to be, it's going to be restoring older cars, muscle cars, that type of thing. You'll be able to, if you have a, you have a car you want restored, you'll be able to go over there and have it restored, or if this gentleman happens to find a car he wants to restore himself, he plans on doing it. And then hopefully would like to market it where it was indicated, on the overhead, which would be in the northeast corner of the parking lot adjacent to 95. It's up against the interstate and not dissimilar to a lot of the other uses that are found in the area along 95, from the auto mall all the way down to the boat dealers that you see down there. One of the things that I believe might have been a concern with the board before was the tree survey. We had to replace some trees back when we were getting ready to do the building. The city requested a survey, and all trees that were in excess of six caliber inches were replaced, and that was done without objection. We complied and cooperated completely with the, the city's request as far as that goes. Unfortunately, the economic climate has been such, and like I said, the back building has not been developed yet, but my client has found a use for the building, and that is as indicated for this type of vehicle restoration and repair. It seems to be entirely consistent with the, the uses in the area and the M2 zoning designation. And we would ask that the, that the planning board approve this. We think it's a good use for the property and certainly one that is commonly found in the area. Let me digress a second, back to the prior, prior agenda item. I know it's off the subject, but I listened to our sister cities complain about their entryway into their city, and the prior applicant is going to provide something that nobody else in the area is going to have, so I was, off the record, I just wanted to say that. I was enamored, as enamored as you all were. It was a great, it was a great presentation, it's going, it's going to be a great project. But getting, getting back to this, this, this is absolutely consistent with the, with the uses around, and we think it'd be appropriate that the city does approve it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Thank you very much. Are there any, are there any questions of the applicant? Anyone? Thank you very much. Well, I guess I could ask if anybody in the audience would like to speak in favor or against, but unless you're going to do it, I, I don't have anybody to ask. So anyway...
Motion to approve rezoning Plan Commercial Development Amendment, Ring Haven, DEV, 2012-047.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Motion second now. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Our recommendation will be for approval. When will it be heard?
First meeting might be in September. So yeah, good to see you.
September.
September.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Downtown, downtown?
Downtown Blue Road.
Yes, ma'am.
Redevelopment met for our monthly meeting. I didn't bring my notes, but the agenda was such that we had three discussion items that took a very long time to get through. There was one item we voted on, and I think it was a Jack White item, but the discussion related to the land development code. We talked about the, we also had a discussion with, with an update on the beach, wait, I want to get it straight, riverfront updates for rivers, for Beach Street. We discussed that in general, got an update from one of the consultants, and the project is coming along very well. I'm surprised, and it's, it's coming along very well. We had, I think it was, I think it was Gold or Gibbs. I get the two Gibbs did a presentation for us, yeah. Yeah, very interesting. I'm looking forward to the revitalization of Beach Street. One of the big things that we went back and forth on again, because we had an issue last month, was on signage. Trying to decide specifically, signage and awnings. Those were the two items that took us a long time on because so many of the awnings date back to the 60s and the 70s. And what we're looking at now is possibly what Winter Park has. Similar in color was another big discussion because most of the buildings now, the going color is taupe, beige, almond, that sort of thing, with a slightly darker trim. So you're looking at a complete revision of Beach Street, but also setting a timeline to grandfather those in that are already there. These were the things that came out during the discussion. Yeah.
Any else?
That's it.
Okay. I thought it was interesting, I don't know if you read in there, but did you notice that they had in their presentation, they indicated that there were only certain kinds of awnings they wanted? Did you happen to notice that? They didn't want the translucent ones, and they didn't want plastic, and so it's kind of interesting.
Yeah. That was a big piece.
See, how about Midtown?
Okay. Midtown, monthly meeting was held July 10th in the chambers. Corner 47, they had a report, and it was a couple of buildings on Martin's, the Kane book. And one of them was to be, the owners gone to paint it and have it pressure washed. The corner 47 was working with the owner. The other one's the church, it's on the corner of Live Oak and Martin's, and the owners repainted the church and everything. The other thing was that, an action item was the amendment to the Midtown redevelopment plan. And what happened there, the provisions, the set forth implemented certain provisions, and it was voted on and approved that they be implement in the plan. Okay, Miller Lehman, item B0A071203, Miller Lehman, was approved for the... and it was voted on and approved that they be implement in the plan. Okay, Mill Lehman, item B0A071203, Mill Lehman, was approved for the fence, ring of the fencing around the building. And item DEV 2012-074555 West International Speedway, that's, I think Mill Lehman, or Bill Miller, Bill one. That one was continuing, if I'm not mistaken, because there's a discussion about what they're going to do with it and whether it's going to be a collar. I'm not really, really sure, but I know it was continued for them to come back to the board. They discussed the item expansion of the Bike Week Master Plan, dealing with Bike Week and Bike, Oktoberfest, and they want to extend it on International, where the new, is it National, right? Where the new Bike, Bike's Place is, I don't know the name of it, but it was all a discussion. It's past...
The motorcycle.
Motorcycle place.
What's Pony at?
Used to be the Pony Place.
Oh, okay.
And they, I guess they want to be a partner, so it was all a discussion, there was no decisions about anything. So it will be coming up again, I'm sure of it. They celebrate, they had a cake celebrating Ms. Mathew's birthday. And the other thing is that the Master Plan will be presented to the CRA with provisions that will be, with provisions that will be made, right? Is that what they said?
They are presenting it realizing that it is just that a plan, and there will be revisions made, but they were submitting it at that point.
Yes. And I think that's the end of it.
Okay. Thank you. How about Main Street?
We had a discussion item actually on the Ocean Deck. They want to do mural on, wall graphics, really, not a mural, because they would be 3D, on both the north and the south sides of the building, which you see, since there's no building next to it, as you go down the beach or come up the beach. And they are, and actually, it was just a discussion because the whole point was to get input from the board on what the board thought would work architecturally with the building itself. When you do those kinds of things, there's a whole part of the Land Development Code that you have to follow in terms of architectural embellishments and design. So we, the board gave quite a bit of direction and input, and we're sure that we'll be seeing it back based on that. The, I take it, the artist that did it, I'm not familiar with him, but he's fairly well-known and has worked with the Ocean Deck before. One of the big things, actually, we thought as a board, they should work in incorporating their signs, their signs sort of lost on their building. They're sort of just, so we gave a lot of direction for that. We were updated on different things, projects in the redevelopment area and are going, pushing forward with trying to set up a workshop date to discuss the, some of the E-zone objectives and how itinerant vending or, not just, it's really bigger than that, how that works, what may or may not have to happen with some special event things, some things that currently happen during special events to meet the E-zone objectives, which it's interesting that that's what we were given tonight. So we're, we're working on that as a board.
Good. Anything else? Again, I, I don't know who to ask the public to talk, because Dennis, you don't want to talk for the public, do you?
Mr. Public must, didn't make it. Yeah, John Q. Public didn't make it.
How about staff comments? Anything?
Just wanted to make sure everyone made note they received the Form Based Code for the E-zone. I think that'll be our unique way we're going to do things. We haven't done that, we've talked about it, and I think it'll, it'll work very well with that project and help accomplish a lot of things that ACOM talked about. Clarion is the author of that. We haven't scheduled anything to make sure everybody had it. We're going to, if that isn't posted already on the website, we did ask that it is, so it will be soon. And we'll be scheduling our subcommittee to begin reviewing probably that, as well as, before we meet, we will have the Land Development Code, Module Three, which will be considerably larger than that. We right now only have three planning board members on that group. We had started with four. I don't know if there's any volunteers to be on that subcommittee, but I thought we'd ask now because hopefully we will start putting some kind of schedule before you meet again.
Anything else?
That's all I have.
I think just a couple of things. I wanted to make a comment, just because I've been on this board so long. And, you know, it's so nice to see a project, number one, that comes to town and looks like it might be built, which we've been through for years and which we've approved a lot and had nothing to show for. Secondly, it's so nice to have this being on a blank slate, that, that they don't have to change something that's there, they don't have to, I mean, you know, they can do it the way they want to do it, and maybe they can get it to where we like it that way. And the third thing is, is that we've talked for years about trying to get residential downtown because that's what it takes to make the small shops work. And that's what this is. I mean, this is just what we want. I, I think it's very exciting. I think they've done a beautiful job on that, on that building, because when I walked by it the other day, I think the landscaping is just spectacular around it. They've really done a nice job. Actually, just one thing, I'd, I'd actually like the board to push a little bit on getting, actually getting a member replaced who is not here anymore, and actually, is there some way we can ask that?
Betty Goodman is the liaison that handles all the advisory boards, commission action, and I know the city recently increased its security process on that. They're doing background checks, things like that, so they were, that's what had delayed it since the resignation happened, but I think they're ready to schedule that soon, at least according to an email I saw today, but they're hoping to fill the one vacancy we have.
Well, I wonder if we could kind of push along on that, too?
Who's, yeah, whose appointment is it?
Commissioner White's zone, because it rotates now.
Okay, I thought, I remembered Sheila had put him on.
Well, I just feel it's unfair to the public that comes here, the less members we have available, the more they have to get of those to make it work. And of course, we were close tonight, and it's just not right. So I think we ought to try to get that done as quick as we can. Is there anything else?
Yes, I have a thank you card from Ms. Benjamin.
Perhaps you sent a lovely card or sat quietly in a chair. Perhaps you sent beautiful flowers. If so, we saw them there. Perhaps you sent, or spoke, or spoke kind words, as any friend would say, perhaps you were not there at all, just thought of us that day. Whatever you did to console the heart, we thank you so much, whatever the part. Shirley Benjamin and the Gaudier family.
That was sweet.
Anything else? I adjourned.
I adjourned.
Nice going, gang.